Good evening, everybody. It's 7:00 PM and I called to order the March meeting of Fox Point Village Board. We're at Shoremore Hall, San Antonio, O'Mart, Fox Point. I'll ask the village board treasurer to call the roll.
Trustee Fonstadt?
Here.
Trustee Simcic?
Here.
Trustee Sumner? Trustee Torado? Trustee Crabbe?
Here.
Trustee Olman?
Here.
And Mr. Smith Frecher?
Here. We have a quorum. We now move to Agenda Item 2. Person's desired to be heard. Here's how it works. Everybody gets three minutes. You can talk about anything on or off the agenda. If you want to wait till the agenda item is called, you can. If you want to divide your time between now and when the agenda item is called, you can. We ask that you pull up speaker cards if you'd like to speak. I have two so far. And I'd like to invite Mr. Thomas Wyker. Mr. Wyker?
I'll speak after.
Oh, you want to speak when the agenda is called?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all right.
The next card is Larry Cohn. Mr. Cohn?
Larry Cohn, 2007. Sorry, I've been with you all last month. Seems like I make a lot every other month. You know what I'm going to remind you of, what I'm going to say. Not much news to report. Monstrosity that you and the school board has given done with my neighbors and me continues. The noise and the disruption of our lives continues. Fortunately, most of it's going to go inside soon. That'll settle down now after well over a year of nonstop life interruption. So there's not much new to report. Didn't want you to think I've gone away or anything. Just wanted to remind you of the shame that you should feel. The only thing new was Christine. Christine chimed in on the next door webpage about the base skyscraper seemingly, apparently, coming out against it. When I requested explanation, further information on your position on that, of course, much like the rest of you, it wasn't anyone, she doesn't have the guts to expound to me. In fact, only one of you has sought out a discussion with me on this topic despite my repeated request to make a talk about it, even though nothing could have done. So really don't expect anything different. Of course, I know questions can never be answered in this forum. So we continue to just, I guess respectfully listen to you. At least you're all looking at me this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard at this point in the meeting? Hearing none, we'll move to Agenda Item 3, which is committee reports. The plan commission met on March 4, 2009. Mr. Fonstadt and I attended. And I, Mr. Fonstadt, would you like to report on the plan commission?
No, I'd be happy to. The agenda notice lists the two items, the two and three items of the plan commission considered. These two items dealt with the small cell tower technology and some federal and state regulations that limited power of the village to regulate cell tower, small cell tower technology. This item was discussed at the last village board meeting, actually at the last two village board meetings. And we have a public hearing set up for next month's village board meeting. The plan commission reviewed the proposed ordinances and material that supported them and had an extensive discussion. And at the end of that, acted formally to recommend that the village board adopt the draft ordinances. The plan commission also discussed, received presentation from the village attorney about vacation rentals. And again, this is a situation where we are responding to limitations put on a village's ability to regulate vacation rentals. Those limitations were adopted by the state legislature, I think, in 2017. But in any case, it's a fairly complex subject. Again, it's been discussed at previous board meetings. Plan commission received a lot of information, had a discussion on it, and deferred action until the plan commission meets in April, April 1st.
I might add to that that because of state legislation and limitations placed on us by Madison, our ability to regulate in these two areas, that is, right-of-way and telecommunications and home service facilities, is such that it's narrow, very narrow. But I think the village attorney did a very good job in carving out as much opportunity as the law would permit for us to still stay involved in the subject.
Very well, any questions? We'll move to Agenda Item 4, the consent agenda. Does any member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Fonstadt?
Item 4C and 4D. I mean, 4A, you can't remember any. 4A and 4D. 4A and 4B, I would, I would like to remove Item 4H.
Anyone else? Very well. I, oh yes.
I have a little question on 4J.
4J?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, come to us.
Oh, you talked to just remove it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
4J. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Very well, I move to adopt the consent agenda, absent items 4A, D, H, and J. Second by Mr. Olman, discussion. All those who may say aye. Aye. Oh, discussion. The consent agenda is approved. As stated, we move to, well, let's see, I think we are at 5A, unfinished business. The property located at 411 Bradley, the village manager will report.
Well, I think that was just a house. Okay, that's fine. Totally fine. This is a repeat customer. They were on the agenda, this is item 1111, last time. And we haven't had any communication. I have sent their stuff in your pack that you should have received multiple emails. There may be a representative from East Bradley Road.
There you go.
Who may or may not wish to speak. The last communication I have from them is that they have, if I'm incorrect, correct me, have decided to move ahead with demolition of the property. And it will be taken down. And that call was emailed to you as well. And I don't have a timetable for that, so maybe the board's probably interested in if you have a timetable. But that is the most recent information I have on 411 East Bradley Road.
Would you like to address the board on that? Tony? Tony, would you like to address the board on this? Yeah, please come state your name and address again.
Oh, yeah, it was 4823 West Anthony Drive in Milwaukee. So the latest is we're going to give a demo by Great Lakes Estimating. We have to fill out a form for We Energies to do the disconnect. We have a phone call into We Energies because there's a couple of questions about the form. We want to make sure it's right the first time. We expect to have it done tomorrow, I hope. This is at six to eight weeks from the letter being to them, which I'm assuming can just fax, to get the disconnect. Once we found out the date of the disconnect, we're going to call the Great Lakes to get on the schedule. And when Great Lakes gets there, it should be a date to demo and remove everything.
I would ask that you, and this probably, I'll just say for record, make sure you're in contact with the building inspector.
With me?
With Mike Rackel, our inspector.
Oh, yeah. We've been talking.
At the earliest possible convenience. And then, you know, if you have a date, let us know and maybe let the neighbors know as much as possible.
Have any contact.
And that would be, that's all the options I have right now, so.
And thank you very much for all the activity between last meeting and now. I know you've been engaged completely in this and we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks. All right, so I don't believe we need to take any action on 5A. We move to 5B, the property located at 139 East Good Hope Road. Mr. Watcher?
Sort of the same thing. This item was on the agenda last month. You should have received the information that I received. And is there a party here for?
Up there. There's a gentleman in the back who may or may not wish to speak on this topic. Would you like to address the board, sir, on this item?
I'm kind of ready to address any questions you might have.
Could you step up to the microphone and state your name and address?
Sure. My name's Andrew Engel. My address is 121 Michelle Drive in Johnson River.
In the pack that you submitted, there was some quotations, some estimates for completion timetables for that. I guess I would kind of throw a little bit to the board if they had a question about the submittals. If things are in change since you've submitted yourself, you're still planning on doing it?
Our architect is, we're adding, all of our plans should be completed next week.
And you've been in contact with the building inspector?
Yes.
What would be the recommendation? What would be the staff recommendation concerning this?
Well, I think, obviously, if you have a party that appears to be willing to reclaim the property in the village and appears to have a timetable that's realistic, then I think that's in everyone's best interest for all sorts of reasons. I'm not going to lie to you and tell you that I think your timetable's totally reachable. Nor necessarily think that your budget may be totally reachable, but that's not my problem. I'm just going to answer that. I think, I just think, you know, I think there's some things in there. But that's part of any remodeling project, you find stuff.
Yep. And they say they're working based on their similar projects.
If it's a building that is salvageable and will create housing opportunity in the village for some, another family, you know, it's tax-based and solves a problem for all of us, then I think I'm in favor. But understand, we're going to hold you to that timetable. And if you start deviating from that, we're going to run you back here.
Mr. Olman?
I just got questions on the cost of everything. What are you planning the house is going to be worth when you're done?
It, appraised as completed, if I hold five, we can do that.
Oh, according to the figures I got off, what you submitted, you paid $355,000 for it?
Correct.
And you got a bid of $170,000 for a?
Renew? Correct. We already got some different numbers going into the project and obviously ran into some issues, which I think the bill is aware of on town. Switched hands with contractors and they were less than liable. So anyway, what we have now, we feel is doable. And even though I'm probably not looking to do very well on this particular project because I intend to finish it, obviously letting it get worse than it already is is not a good option for me, so I.
You got a mortgage on it, right? And you've been paying that for six months?
Correct.
So I figured with the mortgage and lender's fee and processing fee, right now, if you do it at $170,000, we've got $548,963.28 invested.
Yep. Not looking very good for this particular project. I completed 12 flips last year. This isn't something that's new to me. The numbers on this one, unfortunately, did not turn out to be what I thought or hoped initially, but we'll get to take it over with on the dash and take the loss.
Mr. Fonstadt?
Yeah. I'm looking at the timetable. It looks like you're expecting to have this done by mid-June. Now, I was going to ask you what we should expect to have accomplished by next month. It looks, by looking at your timetable, it looks like the real work doesn't begin until sometime in April, right? As far as the physical work. I mean, there's plans and permits and all that sort of thing. So we shouldn't expect anything on site really until April. Is that correct?
Until April?
Yeah. So I, I would have, I guess April's going to be a key month for us to be able to, you know, really see something happen, I guess.
Okay. Anything in particular?
What?
Anything in particular that you'd like?
No, no, I just, you know, we're anxious to see this project, and I'm sure you're anxious to see it. Okay.
Mr. Olman? Are you planning on putting all those windows up those? That isn't a hundred percent of the budget. It should be.
Not discovered yet. I think it's not the first of them.
Yeah, you've got at least one open window there, right? And, thank you.
Mr. Simcic?
I would echo all of Mr. Watcher's comments. I've done three, personally done three massive home remodels, not from a first perspective, but I think that these numbers and the timeline are not realistic. And I hope that, I appreciate the willingness of the applicant to work hard on this, but I hope that the village also, you know, aggressively pursues a solution, whatever that solution might be. And I would actually suggest that, Mr. Fonstadt has some concerns about when the work was going to be starting. And, you know, April is actually just, sorry, two weeks away. So I would actually like to see monthly updates to make sure that there are things that are happening that might, we don't want to be waiting until June if we know whether what's going on here. So I would, I would hope that we could request the applicant to come back and update us again.
The board may ask you to come back to update us on a monthly basis. We have, we need it to, the board to decide that. But as you can tell, we're anxious to see this to the end in an expeditious way. We've been waiting a long time and nothing's happened for all of that.
Well, just to follow up on Mr. Olman's comments, I also know it's on the year. I know how much of the cost. I, you know, I think these numbers will be shown to be not true very quickly. Just not, not to say the project will not get completed. I also know that it can very easily be fine overwise, which is not a reason to penalize somebody, providing there's actually a really, you know, concerted effort to do things. So I just don't want to wait until June to make sure that we know what's going on.
Very well. And other comments?
Just to be, just to be clear, the board reserves the right to pursue a raise order at any time. And we reserve that right until it's done.
And just to follow, I think we're taking along the same lines. I wanted to be very clear that this property is in violation of our code. And to this point, the village has been lenient in to allow you to get this done, but that might not continue. That, all rights are reserved.
So I guess I would like to make a motion regarding this, that we here, we get another update every month, so long as the project is ongoing.
Well, I think maybe that would become when, at the end of the agenda, when we move to put items on the agenda. So if you'd like to leave this to refer and add it on the agenda, I think.
Well, would this not be, are we agenda for this for action or no action?
Yeah, should we? Let's ask the village attorney.
Well, there's, you're also agenda for close session on this item.
Right. Okay.
So we might want, you might want to wait until after the close session?
Totally.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Engel.
Thank you.
All right, we move to new business, which is the first item removed from the consent agenda amendment February 12, 2019. Mr. Fonstadt?
Yes. I would like to, I want to propose an amendment to the draft minutes on line 219 on page 5 of 109 of the village board packet. If you find that, that line, I would propose that we strike the words "Foundation" or "not be doing" and insert in this place that the president of the North Shore Library Foundation told the North Shore Library Board that the North Shore Library Foundation was not prepared to do any refurbishment. That's a, it's, you know, without specifying which foundation, it's, me and it's confusing because Fox Point has its own foundation. And my proposed amendment is a more complete statement of what I report.
Any objections to that proposal? Very well, that will be made by unanimous consent. Thank you. Any other corrections or changes to the agenda? Very well, I move to approve as amended the agenda of our, excuse me, amendments of February 12, 2019. Second by Mr. Crabbe, the new president of discussion. All those who may say aye?
Aye.
Close. Very well. We move to 4D, the approval of the resolution establishing a comprehensive plan special committee. Mr. Fonstadt?
Yeah, I took that item off the consent agenda because I wanted to have further discussion about actually the composition of the committee. I have no issues with the whole committee. It is an advisory committee. I view it as kind of a working group kind of work on the comprehensive plan, make recommendations to the plan commission and subsequently to the board. The proposed composition is village manager, assistant village manager, village president, one trustee, and one citizen. I have a selfish interest. I'd really like to be involved in this committee and I'd really like to have trustee Simcic involved in this committee because of her background. I know she's willing to be involved in it. She's involved in lots of stuff, but I think her involvement would be good. So that's really why I brought it up. As it stands, there's only one village trustee. I don't know if we need both the village manager and the assistant village manager, though I recognize they both bring a lot of expertise to the process. And I don't know if, I've asked the village president how much he wants to be involved in it because it's going to be, I know that it's going to be a time commitment. You have a lot of other time commitments. So I just want to throw that out there, that either I'd rather have two trustees involved, me being one of them. So that's my selfish interest.
The village manager and I came up with the composition and lost her, so to speak, of this committee just by talking. But of course, agendas have discussed this, so we're happy to have this discussion.
You know, I'll be honest, I, I just, we picked five because it was an odd number. But I have to be really honest with you, the number of times that we're going to have the three, two, and I'll be honest, I'm totally, if you want to go to six and add Mr. Fonstadt, that's the board's wish. I have no issue with that at all. It's good to have a trustee that has a great deal of interest in any topic. And it's up to you because you're the president, but I.
I was told I didn't have.
She doesn't have. But you do. So that, that's all it is. I have a thought.
I don't know, I wouldn't mind being on it either, but, you know, it's fine. I can always just let 10 of the eggs. Without being. They are probably.
Yes, that's a good point. This committee is subject to the open meetings law and.
There are going to be four trustees that I mean, notice that has a. Yeah, that's the issue. And the other issue that is there is that, you know, statute totally wants to, we do this, it goes to the plan commission. And the hearings, I think the hearings are at the plan commission.
Yeah, they are. And of course, we must recognize that trust of Fonstadt sits on the plan commission.
I thought of all those things. There are, there's a difference between having a seat at the table than just, you know, either attending or, so anyway, that's, I, I view the plan commission as a very important document and I care a lot about Fox Point, so I'd like to be involved.
Yes?
You know, I, I understand how the committee got put together. I actually think that part of the problem with our current plan is that nobody wants to be involved. So, which is how we end up with what we have now. I, I think that to have, I mean, you do sit on the plan commission, of course, you cheer that as president, but to have another member of the plan commission to bring that knowledge through the process would actually be effective and useful. So I don't have an issue with it. I don't see any sort of rudeness about it. Whatever you want to do is your.
One of our thoughts was initially was to keep this committee small because working committees and advisory, well, sometimes work better if they're small. So that's part of what went into the number that's proposed. Anyone else have any thoughts?
Yeah, I vote that we adopt the resolution by, by change the third line, or the second line of the, the further resolved paragraph to say two village trustees. And then at the end, say, end of that paragraph where it says majority of the five members, say the majority of the six.
If we add another, let me just put it, oh, excuse me. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Olman, discussion is, if we're adding another trustee to lead, should we have another citizen member? You add, we're going to cover.
Why don't you just keep it?
We're all citizens.
I have a question.
Yes.
You've heard what Mr. Fonstadt said. I would agree in my professional experience, things can get unrelenting pretty quickly. I don't think we're at that point yet, but. things can get unrelenting pretty quickly. I don't think we're at that point yet, but what would you, obviously you want it to be five.
Well, the manager and I had discussed that as being probably.
Clearly, all of these meetings are public meetings.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a horse in the name. I have different thoughts about what you really, how you really see this working, whether you really do want to still keep it aside, or whether you're open to six, or how you feel about it.
Well, each of the members of the village board can contribute. I would prefer to keep it at five because it's just a more workable number. Just to review the board, how this works, the comprehensive plan procedure is a little bit different than normal procedures. In other words, the working committee is going to make a recommendation to the plan commission. And the actual work of the comprehensive plan takes place at the plan commission level. The public hearings, the back and forth, the amendments, the changes, and then what the plan commission recommends comes before the village board on an up-down vote. We can't change it. We can't amend it. We can send it back, but we can't do anything further with it. So I think that to the extent that any member of the plan commission wants to participate, fight, that member is going to have that opportunity to amend so.
I think we should just keep the resolution as is.
Excuse me?
I think we should just keep the resolution as is.
All right. Is there any further discussion? So the, the motion is to amend the resolution to increase the number to two trustees. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? The resolution fails. I move to adopt the resolution as drafted. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution is approved as drafted. We move to agenda item eight, the resolution of relocation for the necessity for stormwater improvement. I ask that this be removed. This is a matter that we are going to discuss in close session. And I think the board would better serve if we could take this matter out of order. And I ask members of the senate to that to discuss it after the close session.
Why?
I would refer to the village attorney on that. I, for reasons, discuss the close session.
All right.
Aren't warriors wonderful?
Yes, you are. To please a little.
All right, so by unanimous concession, we will appear this item out of order after the close session. We move to agenda item four J. Let's see his.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So on page forty-six, it says that their, yeah, Whitefish Bay is going to be doing a round of construction and they will need to, oh yeah, fully making annual interest only payments until 2024.
Correct.
So.
You can, you can do that.
Sure.
You just, and the thought is that they didn't want all of us, not just us, it's all of us. They wanted to keep our debt service the same. And we have a previous issue. And that's why I really ran this off for you, because of all the issues. That has been matured away. And when the interest only payments are over, we pay principal handagers and you'll still have the debt service. So they, the fire, the fire department came up with this structure, as you know, to make sure the debt service levy stays flat.
But will be like contributing to those interest only payments?
We all will.
Okay.
All seven of us.
Okay. All right, now on page fifty-two, number two. Oh, and it says that the municipal shall issue to the village of Whitefish Bay a general obligation bond or promissory note. So how, like, how does that?
When they do be, once they bid it out, and then they, they get bids to do the front of it, and then they bond for it. There's actually an agreement, a commissarial, that we all agree to pay Whitefish Bay our part of it. Because otherwise, Whitefish Bay is not going to be able to market and do the bond issue.
Yeah, okay. And so then on page fifty-six, is that, is that essentially like the previous issue that they were having a lot of opening offers?
Oh, the big one. Are you looking at the box one?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And actually, the best way to look at it is on the very page fifty-four. We see the fourth column where our issue starts in, interest only payments until 2023, principal starts in forty-five.
Uh-huh.
But you see that the Whitefish Bay and Bayside issued debt on column one and two, that were 2010 and 2012 issues, matured and go away.
Okay.
So that's, that's how the structure to deal again, to keep the debt service tax for the participants.
Okay.
That was, that was. Thank you.
Does that conclude your question?
Yes.
Would you like to move to the adoption of item four J?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trustee Sumner moves to the adoption of item four J. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Fonsdahl, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, four J is approved. We move to new business, the, trustee Simcic.
So in all my spare time.
Yeah. And all her spare times.
Well, so I, I suggested it be put upon the agenda. And I, I feel like we voted in favor of chickens not too long ago. And I actually think that there's so much evidence about how bees are in our universe in keeping our high immunity. And I do know some people that have bees. Actually, we all put bees in our yard. My dad was a beekeeper, as a molly. But I, I had asked the president and Austin's lady, the village attorney, to look at getting ordinance in place that would allow for people to keep bees in the circle.
And the village attorney gathered other ordinances from other municipalities to give us an overview and a sample of what a B ordinance would look like. There is more variation than I would have guessed at what other municipalities have done with regards to a B ordinance. We are not adjourned to act on this tonight, but I thought this would be at least an opportunity to initiate a discussion about it. Mr. Fonsdahl?
Yeah, the, I'd be interested in hearing from staff whether, to the extent to which we've gotten questions about beekeeping. We've gotten quite a number of questions and comments from the audience about chickens before we embarked on that. But I'm just curious what, what interests we've had from citizens about this topic, bees.
We've had some. We probably, you know, Michael, what do you think? Four or five, six calls over spring, summer on bees?
Sure.
You'd say probably all right.
Is it your experience talking to other communities and other managers that beekeeping is an activity that is neighborly and can keep in the residential nature of a village and the quasi-burrow nature of a village such as ours?
I mean, I haven't, I haven't gone out and researched it specifically, but I would say anecdotally, I think that there, my, my gut tells me there's, there is a great deal of interest in beekeeping for all the reasons that Christine said in terms of requirement and how the bees do and, and the reported rapid decline in population of bees and what people are doing to address that. But I also just think anecdotally, there's probably more communities out there that have an interest in a lot of bees than maybe have an interest in, than a lot of chickens, to be honest with you.
Mr. Simcic?
I mean, that's anecdotal, right?
I mean, it's, it's my personal experience. I don't, I don't, I don't know what I would do with bees, but it's my personal experience that it's pretty much like a lot of things where if you do it properly, there are really no issues that affect neighbors. It's similar to pretty much anything, dog, chicken, a lot of things where if you don't do it properly, there can be problems, which is why you would have had the ordinance that actually talks about how you can do some of these things. You know, it's, it's not a low intensive activity. There's care that goes into this. And there's a lot of, it's actually hard to get a hive to winter over. I know some friends that have bees that they had troubles with wintering them over. But, you know, it's, the chance of bees going across property line and like going after somebody, I mean, bees typically don't go after somebody. I mean, we had bees like twelve, ten years in one childhood. I got stung once since I stepped on a bee. So at that point, the bee really doesn't have that much of a chance. It's got to do something and its finger went to my foot. So they're not aggressive animals unless something or someone comes after it, typically.
Mr. Fonsdahl? Yeah, I, I think from a desirability point of view, bees would, we, the villages would benefit from having bees somewhere in the village, you know, just from the pollinating benefit. I, I did, you know, I, I would be happy if someone were really interested in tending bees to, to permit it in the village. It is a, it's not a trivial undertaking from what I can tell. It's a significant investment in the equipment and the bees and it's a, also a significant task to care for them. But having said that, and I was just going to say that looking at the materials that the village attorney included in our materials, it looks like RoboTosa has a pretty good ordinance out. It's just my, my reaction to looking at those things is pretty comprehensive. And it's a more urban setting than we are, so that's, that's encouraging, I guess. But so, I, I guess the, what, you know, it would take, I think we'd have to have somebody who's really willing to invest the time and money it takes to do it, though. That's, that's.
I am interested now that Ms. Simcic has brought this forward, that citizens maybe will come forward with their views on the subject. I would like to encourage that to hear from citizens to see what they think. And for the board, one thought is, would we, if we permitted this, would we structure it kind of like we structured the chicken ordinance and that the neighbors are notified and have an opportunity to object? I, I don't, I don't say a position on it, but I just ask you to think about that.
Do we have the language here?
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion on this one? Any member of the audience wish to address the board on bees? Hearing none, we will move to future agenda items seven. Any trustee wish to put a matter on the agenda for issues needed? Hearing none, announcements. Mr. Fonsdahl?
I would, here with the chair and Edelman, I would, I want to say something about North Shore Library. Last, at our meeting last month, the Glendale manager attended and made a challenge, I'll say, of raising a million dollars privately to go for the four million plus cost of renovating the library. And with that target, he said that Glendale was prepared to commit to the renovation. I have, so that's, that's, I think, a positive development. We have been looking for, I have been looking for some commitment to private fundraising and to get this project moved forwards. So that's one thing. Secondly, I included the newsletter in material that you have in front of you on the North Shore Library newsletter. So take a look at that. Book sale is going to be March fourteenth to seventeenth. And I understand that the library, the head of the library, not with the village managers today, and with Edelman, I was, Susan is here. I would ask if she had any update that she can provide us on what's going on in the library and the renovation project in particular?
Well, I would ask the board's indulgence to allow the director a few minutes if you'd like. This is Edelman.
I don't think we're allowed to have the appearance, speak, are we?
Well, it's, it's.
Uncle.
Yes.
Okay, the manager will, he, he gets to make an announcement.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll let the manager cover it. Ms. Simcic?
No announcements, maybe.
Ms. Sumner?
No announcements.
Mr. Toronto is not here.
Mr. Fonsdahl?
No.
No one? Mr. Manager?
Saw the video select going down your head. Saying one, that one. No, we did have a meeting today, Susan and myself and Michael. And the library board has given us, or given Susan the director, I guess, for us to meet. We've been meeting on a monthly basis to work out the framework, I think, for primarily a cleanup lease. The lease we have is from 1984, I believe. It was into a good lease in 1984. It's, it's a worse lease in 2019. So there's just some things that we're trying to put together and clean up and add and delete as we look forward to, you know, the capital project. And so I think today we had a really good meeting. We established some basic framework and, and as we tried to do with some of our other programs, our share programs, help the partner, fire dispatch, we basically used some of the same templates that we've used elsewhere. So there's a, there's a component in there that's almost like a fixed capital cost. It costs, it costs all of us a certain amount just to have the existence of this, of the infrastructure to do the library. And then there's a population component. And we're trying to keep it as simple as possible because sometimes these formulas become painful. But we did have a great discussion and Andy drew the short straw, so he's going to come up with a framework for the, for the calculations of the meeting in a month. And I guess that's the extent of my report for today. So that's my announcement on the library. The second announcement is just to be clear, and I, and I don't remember because I'm getting old, if I said this before, but our Fox Point Open House Day is, do you count it for me? Because I think this is the right day. June eighth, I believe, is the Saturday? Am I good? Now, we made the decision to have it June eighth. It's about the same day we've had it in the past. In the past, we tried to do it the Saturday after the last day of school. Unfortunately, this year's school goes until the thirteenth this year. And, and we just did some very anecdotal calls to moms and dads, and they said, we've heard. And as soon as schools are out, we're out of town, they're doing their vacation because it stops late this year. So we kept it at the eighth. We don't think there's really much harm in that. We do have a number of the people that have been popular in the past that are coming back. But as always, if citizens or people watching on TV or you all have ideas for things that you may want to include for us to try it, Fox Point Open House, remembering our budget is near zero, please let us know. So we're open for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. The North Shore Fire and the rest of the directors met this morning at the Village of Fox Point. We were the last community out of the seven to take up the two resolutions which we adopted tonight. So the, the fire commission thanks all of you because. So the, the fire commission thanks all of you, because now we can move forward on those. With regard to the library and the challenge put forward to raise a million dollars for it, Mr. Fontz, I want to thank Mr. Fontz and Ms. Simcic before him, who said, Mr. Fontz said, for the library, going to Christine Simcic preceded him for all the hard work he did this year. It's, it's slow, it's a slow go, but the library is an important asset, and they've really done a very good, thorough, and comprehensive job. And they're assets in that regard. I'd also like to announce my appointment to the special committee on the comprehensive plan, Katie Corcoran. Ms. Corcoran is sitting in the front row, welcome to the meeting, and thank you for coming. That concludes my announcements. We move to agenda item nine to the closed session. It is anticipated that the board will convene in the closed session for the following reasons. A, pursuant to state statute section nineteen twenty-eight five one G, to defer with counsel, who is rendering legal advice concerning strategy, to be adopted by the body. With respect to litigation, which is or likely to become involved, involving properties located at four eleven East Bradley Road and one thirty-nine East Good Hope Road. Participating in this portion of the closed session will be the village manager, the village clerk treasurer, the village attorney, the work village assistant manager, the public works director, and the village clerk treasurer. B, pursuant to state statute section nineteen twenty-eight five one E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducted other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session involving the possible acquisition of land for drainage and stormwater retention purposes. Participating in this portion of the closed session will be the village. C, the village attorney, village manager, village assistant manager, public works director, and village clerk treasurer. C, pursuant to state statute section nineteen eighty-five one. D, to defer with counsel, who is rendering legal advice concerning strategy, to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which is or likely to become involved. Involved in properties located along the former Milwaukee Electric Railway and Light Company. Participating in this portion of the closed session will be the village board, the village manager, the village attorney, the village assistant manager, public works director, and village clerk treasurer. I move that we convene in the closed session on these items. Second, by Ms. Sumner, that's clerk treasurer's call roll. And affirmative vote is we go into closed session, and negative vote is we don't.
Trustee Fontz.
Aye.
Trustee Simcic.
Aye.
Trustee Sumner.
Aye.
Trustee Kravat.
Aye.
Trustee Omen.
Aye.
And President Frasier.
Aye.
We will convene in the closed session. If anybody is interested in any of these agenda items, we will reconvene into open session. And you're all invited to wait in one of our conference rooms and come back when we reconvene into open session. We've asked these chairs on this. Welcome back, everybody, we have reconvened into open session, it's eight forty P M. We will address agenda item nine A. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the board on nine A? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from Ms. Simcic.
I would like to move that we hear from the property owner at our April board meeting, and specifically reporting back what has been completed in his list of proposed work that is going to be out in his house, what is underway, and what, if, if and what any expenditures have been outplayed towards the project at that point.
Boy, clerk, concerning, this is concerning one thirty-nine.
Yes, yes, excuse me, yes, thank you.
Second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Kravat, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we will revisit this in the April twenty nineteen meeting. We move to agenda item nine B. I would move at the adoption of the resolution of necessity, consistent with the resolution drafted by the village attorney found on page twenty-three of the agenda packet. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Before I conclude that motion, I'd ask for any kind of public comment on agenda item nine B. Mr. Wiker, I think you had indicated, you wanted to comment on it, this is your chance.
Well, I only, I just learned about this meeting earlier today, so I'm not.
Step out, state your name.
Tom Wiker.
And your address?
My address, four one two East Jefferson, Oconomon, Wisconsin.
You have a full three minutes to address the board.
Actually, I'm a bit taken back, I wasn't quite sure what the purpose of this meeting was. I kind of found out about it in a roundabout way through my real estate agent. And basically, I was coming to find out exactly what was going on as far as the points that were listed on page twenty-three, because this was all news to me. So, and that, and that's what brought me to this meeting today. So maybe you guys could help me out with a better understanding of the position of the village in regards to the property that I own on Green Vale Road.
This is your opportunity to talk and our opportunity to listen.
Okay.
But if you have concluded your remarks, I think that our, the board's intention will reveal itself momentarily.
Okay. With that, with that in mind, I recently put the lot up for sale. I have an accepted offer for that seventy thousand dollars for the property. And I'd be willing to entertain anything that the village wants to put forward as far as the purchase of the property.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to be heard on agenda item nine B? Hearing none, I will move that the village board adopt the resolution of necessity as reflected in the resolution document as appears in page twenty-three of the agenda packet.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fontz, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution is adopted. On agenda item nine C, the board will take no action.
I will be here.
Second by Mr. Kravat, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, end of night.